Call to order and reconvene the open session for the October 7th, 2019, regular school board meeting of Indian Prairie School District 204. Jackie, can you please assist with the roll call?
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Present.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Carubus?
Here. Quorum present. Ms. Grover, can you lead in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You will notice that Mr. Razak is absent. Earlier in the meeting, the board burdened me to act as president pro tem for this meeting. He has a pre-planned, pre-scheduled absence. Enjoyed watching the Bears lose.
Not.
Right. The next item on the agenda is Board Salutes. We only have one. Ms. Demming?
You threw me. I didn't know that was the only one that we had.
It's all you.
Niqua Valley teacher receives Outstanding Educator Award. The Board salutes Niqua Valley teacher Michelle LaScola, who was recently selected for the University of Chicago's Outstanding Educator Award. Each year, the university invites entering first-year students to nominate an educator who has influenced them, challenged them, or helped them along the path toward intellectual growth. Michelle was chosen from hundreds of nominations. Congratulations, Michelle. Fantastic. Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the Student Representative Report by Shivansh Gupta from Niqua Valley High School. Welcome. The podium is yours.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Shivansh Gupta, and I am a senior at Niqua Valley High School. I'll be Niqua's Executive School Board Representative for the 2019-2020 school year. Just to give you a little insight about me, I'm an aspiring computer scientist and astronomer, and I love to play guitar in my free time. Let's get into your Niqua update.
Is that bass guitar?
No, acoustic. Yeah. The first few months of Niqua has been a success, with our senior advisors welcoming a new energetic class freshman. We are in our second month of college visits, where the representatives from a variety of schools give presentations and answer questions about their colleges while getting to meet prospective students. We can't wait to see where our Wildcats decide to go. We saw an extremely successful spirit week last week, with themed days including PJ Day, Flannel Day, Class Color Day, Neon Day, and last but not least, Blue and Gold Day. The pep rally this past Friday was buzzing with energy. Thank you to orchestras, dance, cheer, and marching band for their outstanding performances. Congratulations to the badminton team for winning. Niqua knows it can dance. This past Thursday, we hosted our annual Niqua Olympics. Thank you to all the students and teachers that helped out and participated. It was truly a phenomenal event. Niqua also hosted its fun, space-themed homecoming dance this past weekend. It was truly out of this world. Due to the offsetting weather conditions last week, we will be hosting our powder puff games this Wednesday. Nothing beats flack football for an amazing cause. We're also honored to, we also honored our new set of national merit semifinalists and commended students. Congratulations to these Wildcats for their hard work and effort. Congratulations to Rachel Steggy for finishing third in the world at the 2019 Fino World Championships at Budapest in the 400 meters freestyle event. Amazing to see what, that we have such, that we have such talent among our students. Congratulations to Niqua Valley's varsity volleyball team for winning against DeKalb. Truly a spectacular performance. And congratulations to the Wildcat football team for their victory against Wabonzi Valley High School. Additionally, congratulations to Ms. LaScola for the Educator Award. That's amazing to hear. And that's it for today. Thank you so much for having me, and I look forward to meeting you all again.
Thank you. Yep. The next item on the agenda is Public Comment. We have one speaker signed up, Robin Vanoy. You want to take the podium? I'm going to read our policy briefly here. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment. I hope you don't take that long. Each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, please respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and ask, and as such, ask that you consider the audience members are this evening and keep it age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by the administrators as appropriate. Thank you much, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to ask my questions. So, my husband and I had some questions based on the presentation from last week from HR about the hiring of staff of color. My first question is, Ms. Demming asked about finding out why the staff of color left the district. Will that knowledge, will that information be made public to us as well? Well, if so, we would like it made public. And then, we would also like to know the number of staff of color who left versus the number of staff of color who were hired. We would like to know about the hiring committees. Data shows that when there is a person of color on the hiring committee, that more staff of color are hired. And so, is the district doing anything to diversify the actual committees who are hiring staff of color? What is being done with the principals, since they ultimately have the final say in their building, of who teaches in their building and what staff they have? We're interested in data pertaining to how many staff of color are actually applying to the district versus how many get hired. And then, our last question is, has the district thought about offering incentives or signing bonuses for staff of color, since based on the data, there are so few? So, what's going to make our district more attractive than, than other districts? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent Report. Mrs. Sullivan, can you please report?
I will report. I want to start by thanking the community for their generous support of the Annual Coat Drive, which has been organized for the past several years by the Indian Prairie Parents Council. We received tremendous support, once again, through donations of hundreds of coats, boots, snow pants, and winter accessories. We're grateful to all of the schools that held drives and the numerous volunteers who contributed to this effort. Coats will be distributed district-wide and at all levels, from preschool through the STEPS program to students and families in need. And additionally, after the needs of our students are met, the remaining coats and winter items are donated to our neighbors at East Aurora, District 131, to support their students. So, we extend our sincere gratitude for all those who helped make this year's Coat Drive a success and provide warm coats and winter items to our students and families in need. Okay, it's October. We're gearing up for Team IPEF and the Naperville 5K and Half Marathon, and the kids marathon later this month. So, this Friday, we are having a district-wide Yellow Out Day, as we're asking our runners, that would be many of you here on the school board, to wear their Team IPEF shirts, and asking others to wear yellow to show their support on Friday for Team IPEF. The kids marathon is set for Saturday, October 19th. It's going to be at Niqua Valley High School this year, starting at 3:00 PM. We have 353 of our students running the kids marathon for Team IPEF. And on Sunday, October 20th, we will see our 555 Team IPEF runners in the Naperville 5K and Half Marathon. Team IPEF will again make up the largest percentage of the charity runners for that event. You have until Race Day to make donations to our runners in their quest to raise dollars for IPEF in our schools. And as was the case last year, I look forward to walking with many of you, right Lori?
Right.
Walking. The 5K with all of you and our board secretary. So, we look forward to that. And finally, this is Principal Appreciation Month in Illinois. It's our opportunity to publicly recognize the work commitment and importance of principals and assistant principals in our schools. We'll be asking you, the board, to approve a resolution saluting our principals later in the agenda tonight. So, great building leadership is second only to the quality of the classroom teacher in terms of increasing academic achievement. So, leadership really matters, and principals and assistant principals are critical to our district's success. We thank them for the amazing work that they do every day. That's it.
Thanks. The next item on the agenda is the FOIA report, which requires no action, but allows for administration to keep the board informed on who submits the request. We received three requests, one from Coca-Cola, one from National Seed, and one from Indiana, Illinois, and Iowa Foundation for Fair Contracting. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda for those items that usually do not require discussion or explanation before board action. Mrs. Donahue, could you make a motion on that?
I make a, I make a motion for the board to approve Consent Agenda Items D through F.
Second.
Jackie, can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
The next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda Items for separate consideration. There are none. And then, we move into Approval of a Resolution. Mrs. Peel, could you move us?
Would you want me to read it? About that long.
The board, I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution recognizing October 2019 as National Principals Month as presented.
You might have to move again.
Okay. I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution recognizing October 2019 as National Principals Month as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? I want to reflect a little bit about principals having a lasting impact on the schools. I'm going to read the "Be It Resolved" part of the resolution. In honor of the service of all preschool, elementary, middle school, high school principals, Wheatland Academy and STEPS principals, and to recognize the importance of their school leadership so that every child has access to high-quality education and to celebrate school leaders' accomplishments, the month of October 2019 is hereby designated in Illinois to be National Principals Month. Principals do have a lasting impact on schools, teachers, and students. I can recall my elementary principal at Cloud, Mr. Pinno, at Hill, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Chiasolo, Mr. DePaul, at Wabonzi, I recall Mr. Gibbs, Mr. Elman, Mr. Pyakai, Ms. Weaver, Mrs. Hilliard.
Wow.
You might remember her by another name. So, I think it's important for us to take a moment to recognize the principals in the district and their lasting impact. We had an event over the weekend for Mr. Gamboa, and there was two former principals in attendance that I was able to see. So, you can see where they serve, and they continue to serve. So, I think that that was a nice moment. So, I appreciate the board recognizing, adopting this resolution shortly. Anyone else?
Well said.
Jackie, can I get a roll call?
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is the Approval of Expenses for the National School Board Conference. Mr. Rising, can you please move us?
I make a motion for the approval of the Board of Education, National School Board Association, 2020 Annual Conference Estimated Travel Expenses as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the expenses?
I just wanted to make a mention that we are fortunate this year that the National School Board Conference is in Chicago. As a board, you know, we try to, you know, be very fiscally responsible with our money, and as such, we don't send usually our whole board to the national conference. The national conference, we get so much more out of, just because, you know, there are a lot of things in Illinois that we're already doing pretty good, but we learn a lot of things from other school districts, and oftentimes, school districts that are even smaller and larger than us that are at the national conference. So, I think it's really nice that we'll be able to have that in our backyard this year. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Anyone else? I think it's important to note that school board members are volunteers, and we don't get paid. So, it's, we do have, we do enjoy having certain expenses paid by the district. And from a governance standpoint, it's good policy to have some volunteers engage in continuing education so that we can govern well. I've attended the conference in prior years and found value in it, so I'm glad that the board is making an effort to continue to educate and attend if they can. Jackie, can I get a roll call?
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item on a communication update related to District Goal Four. Janet, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with our annual update on the Communication Services Department. I'm joined this evening by Greg Gibson and Lisa Schwartzberry, and behind us, the gentleman who has a soft focus filter on each of us this evening is our media producer, Clayton Urbannick. He promised. Much of our work is done to support District Goal Number Four to be student and community-focused. We measure that goal by adding a question each year to the Illinois Five Essential Survey, where we ask parents to give the schools in our district a grade. For the past six years, 90% or more of parents who participated gave a grade of an A or a B. That is an incredibly high, consistent number. In comparison, it's about 40% higher than numbers seen on national polls. Taking a look at the Communications Dashboard, this is a summary of data collected by our department reflective of our work for the last school year. We want to call your attention to a couple of areas where we are still seeing consistent growth. The first is related to downloads of our mobile app. In 1718, we had 1,000 new downloads. That number last year grew to 1,500 new downloads. The polar vortex last winter was not a pleasant experience for most of us, but it was a really positive thing for our Twitter account. We added 3,300 followers last year, and the majority of that came over the winter. And according to the Farmer's Almanac, I'm hoping a year from now, when we get to do this presentation again, we'll be at a total of 20,000 followers. That's our new target, because they're calling for a lot of snow this winter, so.
Janet, e-learning.
Yeah, you know, kids need to know. They're going to follow us. The other area where we're seeing a lot of growth is still coming in our YouTube subscribers to our channel. In 17 and 18, we had 465 new subscribers. Last year, we added another 556 new subscribers. Video continues to be a really wonderful way for us to share stories about our district. And if you look at this chart, it is definitely a way that our community likes to receive and consume that information. In 17 and 18, we had just over 68,000 views of videos on our YouTube channel. That number increased last year to 90,300. And we produced a few videos less last year. We had a total of 45 new videos that we posted on our channel last year. In addition to external communication, our department last year and continuing this year has had the opportunity to provide support to a couple of other district, or other departments. The first is the Curriculum and Instruction Team. They produced a series of very short tutorial videos called PD on Demand. And Clayton was able to put together some branding materials for them to add some consistency, and Greg carved out a spot on the staff website where those are accessible 24/7 for our staff. Kathy Pease, over the summer, had this really terrific idea of taking that PD on Demand idea one step further and creating a PD podcast. So, I'm happy to share with you. Later this week, we will be launching, for the first time, the Indian Prairie Podcast. It will be available on all of the platforms where people find their favorite podcasts. The business office asked us a short time ago to create a way to help increase an understanding amongst our staff of the Employee Benefits Program. Clayton did a really great job working with the benefits team to create a series of short explainer videos. They're very focused, run about a minute in length, and they address just one particular topic related to the benefits program. Those videos are also available on the staff website for staff to access anytime they're looking for information. We love to share our videos with you during our annual updates, so tonight we're going to show one of the benefits videos to you. We've had a little bit more than 500 views of the benefits videos, and we're going to continue to produce those this, this school year as well. I'm going to turn things over to Greg, so he can give you an update on the website.
Last school year, our web visits totaled about 6 million, as they have for the last several years. And that said, they did go up by a few hundred thousand over 2017 and 18. The 1819 numbers tacked pretty closely with those of the previous year, until the cold weather days in late January. Then, for the rest of the school year, they jumped about 5% higher than they'd been in 17 and 18. A big driver for this was the growth in Twitter followers. As the cold front approached, we picked up more followers, and those followers remained more engaged for the rest of the school year, frequently clicking or tapping on links back to our site as we posted them. Though our total number of visitors has been pretty stable for years, the method by which they visit has continued to shift to mobile. When we met you in January, I mentioned that a majority of our main district's website visits came via phones for the first time ever. So far in 2019, that number's jumped again, so that nearly two-thirds of our visitors are on phones, twice the rate of just three years ago. And then, when we met in late January, I was in the middle of an audit of all our web content. By the beginning of last year, our site had accumulated over 15,000 web pages and documents, many of which were no longer needed, and cluttered up Google search results. After speaking with members of all our departments, we archived over half of these assets by this past summer. That was just the first round, and it's going to be an ongoing annual process, where I try to keep things lean without the removal of anything that might still be relevant. For this school year, I'm focusing on three projects. First, we're evaluating new web hosting. Our Tech Services Department already has a partnership with Microsoft, and we're investigating moving our websites and databases over to Microsoft's cloud platform, Azure. We're estimating that this would help cut our hosting costs by over one-third. It would provide us with free automatic backups of our content and data. It automatically adapts to high-traffic situations, and it should allow our websites to communicate more seamlessly with any of Tech Services' current Azure assets. Microsoft already hosts websites for plenty of K-12 districts, universities, and Fortune 500 organizations, so we're in good company. I'm testing it out this fall, and if all goes well, we'll immediately start moving our content over to it. Second, a few months back, the superintendent brought to our attention an ISB-recommended list of items that all districts should provide at their websites in the name of transparency, things like board info, financial reports, FOIA, and certain policies. Our website did already have all those items online that pertain to us, but we didn't have a single page that linked to all of them, so we made one. Our transparency page is now up and always available from the district's homepage, under the About IPSD 204 menu, and you can go directly to it at www ipsd.org/transparency. Finally, my big project for the year is redesigning our staff website, which is the first phase in a redesign cycle for all our websites. The new design optimizes its interface for all the ways people visit our sites, on more and more phones of varying sizes, on widescreen desktop monitors, on higher-resolution laptop screens, via screen readers, and it still looks good and loads quickly on old devices with iffy connections, too. We'll be launching the new staff sites toward the end of this year, and then take the lessons from that to start building a new version of our district and school sites next. Going offline, here's Lisa with an update on community relations.
Thank you. As our percentage of low-income families remains at 17%, we continue our focus on supporting our students and schools through obtaining resources for students and families in need. Valuable connections have been made through serving as the district liaison to community organizations such as the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation, the Indian Prairie Parents Council, Rotary, and the Chamber. Again, this year, IPPC held a donation drive to purchase school supplies and has raised $16,000 over the last two, two years to support this effort. This year, school supply kits were purchased for students in need across the district and at all levels. You can see the generous support from this photo, which shows the pallets of school supplies that were delivered to the CEC. Additionally, through the support of IPEF, we were able to purchase headphones for 600 students and provide graphing calculators at the high school level for students to check out from the LMC. We are grateful for the generous support of IPPC, IPEF, and all our community partners who helped provide support for over 1,000 students as we began the school year. Our department is also assisting in the superintendent's search. Eleven stakeholder meetings were held to gain feedback from our students, teachers, staff, parents, and community leaders. 174 individuals attended meetings, and just under 1,200 people provided feedback, whether through face-to-face meetings or by filling out the survey. As the board moves forward in the process and names the new superintendent, we will assist with introductions to various community organizations.
That's our update.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I had a question about the podcast, since we had 500 views. Are we also watching how many people start to make use of that, that program?
We will, we had 500 views of the benefits video. The podcast, once we launch it, we will definitely track it.
Okay. That was a really good video. I'm comparing it to a GCN, and it's nice. It just moves along.
Clayton is good.
So, I just have two quick questions. So, could the 22,000 views be because it was a really good school board election in the spring? No, I was surprised. I mean, that was, that's a, we've seen huge jumps in the last three years of our video views. I mean, that's, you know, it was kind of strange, because, I don't know, I knew we had a lot of, okay. So, my other question is, I know there was talk, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, so if you need to get back to me, that's okay. I mean, I don't expect an answer, but it was something I was just thinking of, is that we had talked a while back with communication and technology, and we talked about informational videos for our community, possibly, or looking at that down the road. And it sounded more like a, kind of a partnership between communications and the technology department. a kind of a partnership between communications and the technology department. I know technology's been a little busy with our student information system, so I get that. But I know, you know, topics were talked about, like whether it's Chromebooks, and we could do e-learning as a video, or vaping, or something like that. Do we have kind of an idea or some type of thing, like, I love that there's staff podcasts, but I would love if there could be videos for parents, and we could get some messaging out as well. Is there any on-the-horizon plans for that? Again, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I can tell you, Mark, that we talked about doing the podcast externally, but we want to start internally first and launch it that way. But it is definitely something that can grow externally for parents easily.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Great work.
Really very nice, very nice presentation. What's our first subject for the first podcast?
Flexible delivery of instruction.
Just wondering. Thanks.
I'm thankful. Often, as a board member, you wonder what kind of reports you're going to get on some information. And I see a lot of data, and I see a lot of information. And I'm very thankful for how this is structured. It shows the growth over time. It gives good perspective on what's working and where we're going to be steps down the road. This is what I did this year. This is what I'm going to do next year. When you sit on this side of the table, it's good to see those kind of reports. So thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, you seem to be the only department that's really excited about snow days.
I'm sorry. I'll apologize.
Right? I mean, it's good for you guys. The rest of us...
Students aren't, I don't think our students have that quite same excitement about seeing whether it's a snow day or not.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion item on proposed new high school courses. Kathy, please lead us.
All right. I will, as soon as John helps me switch over.
Looks like you have a team together to help. All right.
We are excited to be here tonight, so thank you for the opportunity to share with you some new high school courses that we're proposing for the 2020-21 school year. I have with me tonight Grant Sarr, who's our Director of Elective Curriculum, Mike Purcell, who's our Director of Core Curriculum at the high school, and then Brian Giovinini, who is our Director of Innovation. Tonight, we want to provide you with information regarding these new high school courses. And typically, what we do is we allow some time to pass before we ask for approval. So we'll share with you the information, answer as many questions as we can tonight, and then we'll come back to you at the October twenty-first board meeting to ask for approval. This is in direct reference to Board Policy 640, which looks at curriculum development. We'd like to start by just sharing with you, once again, our portrait of a graduate. Just these, this is our guiding template for looking at courses to help develop these skills or these competencies in our students. So as we looked at what courses to propose, this was a document that we, our curriculum teams looked at and said that these competencies could be achieved through some of these courses. Tonight, we'll be talking with you about business certifications, cybersecurity, Project Lead the Way Aerospace, music production one and two, athletic training, botany, and American Sign Language four. Going to turn it over to Mike, who's going to talk to you about how our process works.
Thank you, Kathy. Generally, to give you an overview of how the process goes for all the classes that you'll see tonight, is really these courses, whether it's a new course, or it's a kind of a rethinking, a reimagining of an existing course, you'll see a little bit of both tonight, come to us through the academic department chairs at the high schools. And what we will look for them is to come together to say, what's a common need that we have, to kind of flesh that out, and then to individually, to collectively come up with a presentation for them to individually then share at their instructional leadership teams, their ILTs, to get a real broad-based building view from their building leaders on how is this going to impact our kids, and how is it, how does this, what's the merit of it, how many students is it going to impact, does it meet the needs of a graduate, things along those lines. Once that is complete, then they, the ILTs make recommendations to us. We bring those to Cabinet, which we did last week, and then those that are approved by Cabinet come to you today.
That being said, Brian, you want to start us off with business?
Absolutely. For business, they did a little bit of a design-thinking opportunity to kind of really take a hard look at all of their courses and their sequences and what that looks like for three specific goals. The first goal being our current pathways and our courses and what that aligns to in our career clusters. As we talk more about the world of work and the future of what it could be, we wanted to align those to the career clusters and some opportunities there. The second was look for certification opportunities. So this year, we are going to be piloting some certification in our courses where there's no curriculum change needed. We could provide the experience for students, and we feel like fifty percent of them could be successful with no change in what we're doing. And the third one was to take a hard look at, what are our courses? Do we need to make any adjustments or changes to those? And that's what we're going to propose to you today. From that conversation, three courses were determined that, you know what, we need to take a look at these and remove a couple of them, because there was some overlap. We need to integrate them in some of our other courses, and those being interactive media and marketing tech, and then rethinking essential tech. And out of that conversation, posing the essential tech moving into the business certification course and cybersecurity underneath the business department. So the certification course, what is it? Why did this come about? Dr. Sullivan has done an amazing job of talking about the future, the future-ready, and what that looks like. And as we talk more about the gig economy and more and more individuals having to kind of gig that work out, so they're not working for one company, but they're kind of looking for opportunities. A company needs a website built. I'm going to go look for somebody who has that skill set. I'm going to go, I'm going to do that job then. And companies are more and more experienced in that and looking for that opportunity. And we also are starting to see that, as we go through this industrial revolution, that employees are starting to having to reinvent themselves, even in manufacturing business, and constantly trying to having to upskill, so they are keeping up with the times and what their industry demands. And so this is kind of an introductory level to what that may look like, and starting to earn some certifications. And the last one is stackable credentials. And what that means is earn one, and kind of builds upon it, so that you can keep working through that, the introductory level to the certified, to the expert, and continued effort for it. We got here by a thankful partnership with Adam and his IT team to allow our teachers to really kind of experience what certifications would look like, and that's how we started to reimagine what this course could be. So as we developed this, at the end of our development, students would be able to earn some Adobe Suite certifications, Microsoft Office certifications, three sixty-five, and your traditional ones, and then Microsoft Technology Associate certifications. That's going to be more of your coding HTML certifications outside of the Microsoft Office suite. We're going to leverage some of the project-based learning through this, competency-based education, give kids an opportunity for some choice in what they look for and what they can earn at the end of this course. And they can choose their path based on past experience and what they're interested in the future. Some resources available for this are Adobe CertiPort and Microsoft provides some amazing resources for our teachers to kind of build from and our students to experience with. As we start this off, CertiPort will be the certification host where we earn those certifications through. There is a cost associated with that. We are going to use some of our CTE funding in order to pay for the student costs to start. It's important to do that. Once you start with a hundred percent, that's, you can go up to that. If you start fifty percent district, fifty percent CTI funding, you can never go above fifty percent. So it was important for us to kind of look at that lens to start and make sure we can provide that opportunity for students. We'll look at it as we expand it. We'll look how we fund that in the future, but right now, we're going to start with our CTE funding. The next one is cybersecurity, which couldn't be placed more perfectly as cybersecurity month. If you have gone on Google, it says, "Check your cybersecurity." I hope you've all changed your passwords, updated them, to make sure that it's updated. And all your websites that are tracking your data gives you a nice little breakdown of that, so I recommend that. But why are we talking about this? Cybersecurity attacks are becoming more common, more harmful. They're a part of what we do now. They're part of what we experience. If you talk to anyone, change your passwords, update them. It's a constant process of what we're doing. Companies are talking more about this, needing professionals who have these skill sets to protect what they're doing, because unfortunately, not everyone is good out there in trying to take some of that data. In 2016, the unemployment rate for cybersecurity jobs was zero percent, and they're up seventy-four percent in the past five years. We're continuing to see a trend for that. Though what of what that looks like, there's a lot of ways in which you can go through cybersecurity, and this is one of those courses that'll constantly have to be evolved and changed and updated because of the technology change. And at the same time, our students are going to just come in with more information, more knowledge. But as a background, these are some of the topics and details that a student in cybersecurity will experience and see, from cybercrime, security principles, how to defend networks, what that looks like, what does good hacking look like, and then software security. Also starts to hit on some of that digital citizenship that we're talking about, K-12, but really emphasize it in this course to give students an experience with it. And even if they don't go into cybersecurity career, some great knowledge building from that, but at the same time, this gives a nice pathway to some associate degrees and other experiences. There was a handful of professionals came to Niko Valley a couple weeks ago, and one of the IT professionals talked about just having the skill set and being able to get hired right away with these skills. There's too many resources to count for this, including from Homeland Security, Cisco, CompTIA. There's a number of districts in Illinois and across the nation who are looking at cybersecurity and implementing that. College DuPage in the past has offered a nice cybercamp for teachers and students to experience with. So there's a lot of resources for us to build and develop off of this as we move forward. Oh, sorry. You went, you already went. The next one is Project Lead the Way Aerospace. The reason for this class, while we're looking at it, I'm going to read a line from an online kind of education portal. "Technology is advancing at a rate unparalleled since the Industrial Revolution, and aerospace engineers are at the forefront of that expansion as they research, design, and develop." So I think that really did a nice job of kind of encompassing how aerospace hits a lot of that innovation, the technology, where we're going. You can see the backdrop of what aerospace is, but looking at the NASA website, having an experience and understanding of aerospace really kind of gives you some, a leg up and experience in all careers. On the NASA website, pilots obviously have developed an understanding, technicians, automotive pilot technicians, and the life scientists, psychologists, medical doctor, biologists, and technicians, and mathematicians, just the skill set that is built from this aerospace. The content, the content kind of builds around these aerospace concepts, but what the Project Lead the Way sequence and experience has really done a nice job with is they've reimagined their end-of-course assessment and combined some of the content, but also reimagined some of the things that align directly to our porch of a graduate. And from their website, it kind of highlights this. Their assessment now includes problem-solving, critical and creative thinking, collaboration, communication, and ethical reasoning, and incorporates that into the assessment. So now they're, now that instructional design really lends itself to building towards that assessment, because those are the skills that we found are important for what that looks like. The reason, another reason why we're continuing to look at Project Lead the Way Aerospace is really looking at that engineering pathway and building that out. Aerospace has a nice mechanical background to it. So if a student enters an IED, which is Introduction to Engineering Design, or Principles of Engineering, kind of gives that mechanical, that's the next step to it, as a pathway to our capstone engineering design development, or to a career in the mechanical or aerospace fields and what that looks like. The other, we've had some questions of, why not other Project Lead the Way experiences and classes? These all fall underneath the engineering pathway and scope and sequence, and kind of fall into that package. AP Computer Science is another pathway offered by Project Lead the Way. We've looked at some other resource and vendors to build out that computer science pathway in our math departments and our business departments, as well as some of the things that you'll find in engineering. And then the biomedical is outside of our engineering package as well, so that these all kind of fall into that engineering pathway and kind of building that out a little bit for students. And so these are the resources and costs to go with it. Some of these, some of these are one-time costs to kind of, some of the resources that are available at ten thousand per school, and then the core training costs to get teachers up and running for the aerospace class.
All right. Let's move on to music production.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm happy to talk about a potential music production course. For quite a few years, the music faculty have been discussing how to combine music and technology and how to create a course that centers on those two. And it's been difficult over the years, because typically, there's so much to cover, and how do we do that, and how do we have a lab that's specialized for that? And actually, over the past several years, advancement in web-based music apps, and now with our students being one-to-one, have put us in a position where we can leverage those apps and technology to provide this opportunity for our students. Another reason we're looking at this is we'd like to provide an access point for students for music at the high school level. For many of our students, if you don't start playing an instrument early on, there aren't really a lot of opportunities at our high schools for our students. So we're hoping that this will be an opportunity that would be accessible to all of our students nine twelve. As we were looking at designing this course, we reached out to several music technology programs at leading universities, and one was Berklee College of Music. We met with them via Zoom and talked to their music technology chairs and asked them just a couple simple questions. What are you looking for in your music technology majors as they audition, and where do they wind up after they study? And one of the really interesting things that we found is that colleges are now seeing the computer as the instrument. So no longer are they requiring students to audition piano, play at what we would consider to be a traditional instrument. Students are coming to the table with their computer and playing their pieces. So there's really a change of thinking going on at the collegiate level, too, about what instruments look like and how we can train students to get ready for post-secondary study. So we're looking at making the class Chromebook-based using Soundtrap, and the cost for this course will include supplementing some of the labs that we have at our schools already. So we have digital keyboard labs, so we would supplement that with various USB input devices to facilitate the class. So that's music production. Our second course I'm going to talk about tonight is athletic training. Currently, our junior and senior students have a menu of options to pick from during their PE experience, and we're looking to add athletic training as an option. And what the primary reason for this is to look at exposing students and making some career linkages for them in terms of what opportunities are available to them in the fields of athletic training and sports medicine. And the cost for this really will be curriculum development and digitally-based resources that we decide will be appropriate as we go through that development process.
Thanks, Grant. Moving into our next course, which is a botany class. This would be a replacement class. We talked about reimagining some of our classes, and we have a, currently have a horticulture class at the high schools, which is not a, not a lab science class. And so we really wanted to find an opportunity to create a graduation requirement and NCA fulfilling life science class that would be equally engaging, or maybe even more engaging. That piece of doing that hands-on, digging in, getting in the dirt, and really understanding life science from literally the ground up is a, is a place where our science department chairs are really excited to, to put that in place of the kind of horticulture curriculum, which has kind of run its course, and really to dig into the next-generation science standards from the, from the botany and lab science level. So that class is really just a switch-in. We have all of the components to run that class now. We're just, it's going to be some time for our teachers to come together and, and put their thoughts together for curriculum time, but really know materials that would go along with that. The other class that I want to talk to you about is our, I've come to you a couple times talking to you about American Sign Language, and it has become our third most popular language of the five. It is, the enrollment in that has grown by twenty-five percent in each of the last two years in the program. That we really have a commitment to, to our kids that are coming, both enrolling as eighth graders, to know that there's a four-year pathway in there, and also to our, to our kids that are sitting in those Level III classes now that are really engaged in this program, to put a complete pathway in there. So really, this will focus on those higher-order vocabulary and grammatical structures, and the production and really the storytelling part, similar to what we'd have in Level IV classes in our other, in our other world languages, that we would look at the new materials for this class. And we're just really excited that this program has really taken off here in Indian Prairie, that the number of sections of this has increased each year. We really look at, look forward to building out this complete pathway.
So when we look at these courses, really, the only increase in our FTE would be a possibility of a point two, depending on how many students take an ASL course, that ASL four. The rest of our courses are mainly electives, or as in botany's replacing horticulture, so it's the same students, just making a different choice for a different class. So we're not expecting to increase FTE in any of these areas. The total startup cost, if we were to be able to implement all of these, would be an estimated... an estimated $85,000, and that would include the Point II FTE if we needed to increase that in our world language department. Typically, that might just be adjusted from another department, but just in case, that would be the increase that's there. As I said before, we will come back to you after we answer questions today at the October 21st board meeting to ask for approval of any of those courses that you see as being able to move forward. If approved, then we will bring some teachers together to start to develop that curriculum. And when the curriculum is developed, we'll come back to you and say, remember that course that you approved, that cybersecurity, here's what the curriculum's going to look like for that, and a possibility of any resources that may need to be included in that, or instructional tools that may need to be approved by the board as well. And then, of course, with all of our courses, we'll look at ongoing professional development, so preparing our teachers to be able to teach the courses and to give them the support that they need to make these engaging and interesting for our students. So with that being said, we'd like to thank you for your time, and we're available to answer any questions you may have. I know there were some good questions before, so we're ready.
So I'll throw mine out again. And I apologize, Kathy and Brian. You know, this is where I struggle with my role as a board member, because my job is not to run the schools. My job is oversight, and, and you guys are the experts when it comes to instruction and curriculum and everything else. But I'm really struggling with the aerospace engineering course. And just because when I look at the data of in-demand engineering jobs, you know, electrical engineers, robotics, robotics is like two, electrical engineers like fourth, environmental science is like sixth. Of course, I love biomedical engineering, but I know that's a different strand. So let's only focus on the strand that we're part of, which, there's two courses in there, digital electronics and environmental sustainability. Environmental sustainability, I know we have a course called AP Environmental Science. However, AP Environmental Science just looks at the science. Environmental sustainability for Project Lead the Way really focuses more on alternative energies and things around that. Nowhere in my research is, I mean, have I seen aerospace get to the level of environmental or electronic, electrical engineering, because electrical engineering is also, you can figure some robotic stuff in that, too. So again, I, I don't, I trust your judgment, but I just, I have no problem to see how this goes. I'm just thinking, I'm thinking there might be more interest in those electronical engineering or environmental sustainability engineering courses than there will aerospace. But I have no problem with trying it out. I mean, it's, you know, we've already paid for that, and I mean, for the most part, we're in that strand, so I don't know if you wanted to give more feedback, and I know a few of us already asked a question. So go ahead, sir.
Oh, we can highlight one of the, digital electronics is a part of our sequence right now, so that is an experience that our kids can engage with as part of that sequence. And the aerospace really kind of, if you look at our experiences from IED and POE to the next level, to EDD, there's that little gap of some of that mechanical side of it, and what some of our students are kind of informally asking for. That's kind of why we're experiencing or going that route.
I get that.
Yeah, I think we, we look at the skills that are involved in the course, not, because aerospace is really the mechanism to get to the skills. And so when you look at the skills that are involved in those mechanical skills, they follow right along for those students who are already shown an interest, and through talking with them about how they can expand that interest, that aerospace course really provides them with that next layer of those skills, more so than an aerospace career-type piece, but the skills in order-
There's a large mechanical part in there. I get that, yeah.
It's the, it's the mechanism to get there. And many of those things are transferred into other areas of engineering and other, with another focus other than aerospace. So, and I think we talked a little bit in about, you know, it's just not about a, a remote vehicle, a lunar rover. It's about, you know, self-driving cars and things like that, so.
Well, and I think it looks good, aerospace. I mean, you know, colleges, that's going to pique a college person's mind, and then the student can explain, yes, there's a large part of that that's mechanical, which is great, because that feeds into what they've already been following down the path. But I hope we look at environmental at some point, too, because I think that'd be nice as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I also was kind of questioning that. That one was the one that jumped out at me, so I thank everybody for their questions. But, and I also understand about the biomedical, but I, for me, that's one that I would love to see somehow us getting something in biomedical in our curriculum, because I just see that all over the place. And I interview a lot of students for engineering schools, and like, all of them are asking about biomedical engineering, so.
It's my daughter's major.
Yeah, I really, I really think it's something we got to look at.
Sure. Thank you.
Susan?
I, I shared some of my thoughts regarding the aerospace. And as I've looked at some of the collegiate information and some of the information that I shared with you from some of the sources that I saw, you know, mechanical engineering, certainly the robotics field, and I know you touched on some of the aerospace, helping some of that mechanical arenas, but biomedical and environmental certainly jumps out quite a bit. I think, I'm so happy that we're doing the focus on cybersecurity, because obviously that's, that's everywhere, so that's, that's critical. But that environmental, environmental and biomedical piece, and I shared that, you know, some of my thoughts with you already on that, but would really love to see if we can take a look and determine if there's a role that we can include in our curriculum at some point.
Well, I thought it was great that this came after we got to go see Bill Daggett and talk about the future of the world and future of work before this was brought before us. And it's exciting that we are looking at that from this perspective. And so I was just kind of looking at some of the courses. You know, he talked about exposing our kids earlier to what they love, rather than waiting till the end of their high school career. So I see a couple, and I love the music. I've always felt like we did not tap in on enough kids who love music the way we do it right now, so that's awesome. And that's obviously one of those courses they can take at any time.
Yes.
So I love that. I love that we are doing that. I'm thinking the botany is, again, one that they can take at any time. I mean, and, and I get the concerns, and yeah, people are in the universities and getting their PhDs. Biomedical is a very big deal. On the other hand, I want to get kids engaged and excited, so I think, you know, within our budget, we have to keep pushing forward. But I, I really applaud these, these efforts. These are really, really exciting to me, so. Am I wrong in the ones that I mentioned? What about cybersecurity? I was wondering when they could start taking that.
Students?
Yeah.
Next year. We're going to put it in the course guide in-
I mean, what level would they?
Oh, what level? Nine through 12.
Yeah.
So kids come in with a variety of different backgrounds and experiences and skillsets that, we'll coach them up on where they should fall, but some students can come in as a ninth grader and be definitely successful.
So three of these are, are definitely at any level, so, and that's really exciting. Thank you, guys.
And I'll just add to, you know, we agree with you about exposing them early and helping them figure out what they enjoy and what they love and those kinds of things. We've talked to you before about the world of work, and looking at their strengths, interests, and values, and how that fits into the world of work. And so, you know, that's part of our goal, is to start early, start at the kindergarten level and work all the way through, so that when they are at high school, they've, you know, weeded out some things, they're looking at some things, and they can, I didn't know I was interested in this, but I'm going to try it, and those kinds of experiences for them. So we, we completely agree with you on that.
I love these courses that you've added, especially cybersecurity and the certification courses, because I know you can put that on your resume that I'm certified. So I think for students, that's really great. The music one, a lot of kids are doing their recording. You see freshmen wanting to be DJs, so that's great. Botany, I think the two that stood out for me was ASL and there, the aeronautical engineering. I think we've kind of discussed that. But with ASL, I noticed a decrease in the number of students from ASL II to ASL III, and I'm just kind of wondering how many students we expect for ASL IV? And part of that, I'm thinking whether we have explored looking at other languages that align with our school community growing diversity. So if you could just talk about that.
Yeah, in our ASL III class, it's a, it's a newer course for us, where we're still sort of filling up the pipeline. There are more kids enrolled in ASL III than there are in German III or Chinese III. So while we expect there to be that class to run, the ASL IV class to run at, for sure, at one of our campuses and maybe at another, depending, just looking at the enrollment of students that are not 12th graders enrolled in ASL III. We, as we look down the road and our, and the kids that are sort of in that pipeline, we see that continuing to grow. So we, we think that the number of sections will be, we haven't had, and some of our other languages haven't, have been doing some stack sections for a couple of years. I think we'll have full sections of ASL IV in all of our schools after, year after next. So we'll, that's a, it's a really growing class, as you see, year after year, that, the total enrollment continues to grow. So it's a newer, it's a newer thing, and I think one of the things that's preventing some of that year three growth is that we have it at year four, right? So that student, that uncertainty of what's the end of the pathway. So we, we have a lot of demand for that. In terms of other languages, the, the piece that we just need to take a look at is what would that language be, and, and how does that, how many languages, maybe too many, right? So they're taking a look at the demand, and certainly we are always in kind of constant revision, working with our world language chairs, who are really our closest ears to the ground for that conversation, in terms of who are, what are the things that are coming up to them, and the, and the conversations they're having with kids, and in their classrooms, and, and with folks that are in that community, and, and working with their peers in other, in other buildings. So those are our folks that are really front lines in that conversation.
And I would just add, you know, that, you know, for the ASL IV, you know, that four years of having a world language when you apply to some colleges is very beneficial. And so I think some students who may be on the college or university path may hesitate to go into ASL because of that, so adding that will give us an idea as to whether that, that was the barrier or not. Certainly, we will not run a class unless we have enough students to fulfill that and to make it worthwhile. And when you look at other languages, we're always open to be reflective of what our students need. So I would, you know, the, the other piece to that is, is that finding teachers to also teach those languages. There aren't a lot of certifications in some of our, some of the other languages that are native to our students. So, you know, looking at, not only would students take the class, could we find somebody to teach that class, and then how would we develop that curriculum and those kinds of things? But we're always open, because, you know, we want to give our students the best opportunities that we can provide for them, and looking at which languages are most beneficial to them, you know, that comes from our current enrollment, as well as the interest that's shown from our students, and requests made to their school counselors as well.
I like, I like how you started with the portrait of the graduate, and it talked about kind of abstract concepts, innovation, adaption. And then you drilled it down to, well, how does this relate to me as a student? I get to take this course. That is being innovative, that is being, that is adapting, even the district is adapting. So I like how you, you built from that abstract to the concrete. Building on the communication piece, I think something to consider is maybe being a little bit more deliberate in empowering the students and parents to come forward with recommendations, letting them know that there's an opportunity for that, maybe in being more purposeful with the survey. Because then it helps the department chairs make that decision. What is the demand? How do I meet the needs right now and anticipate the ones in the future? And there might be barriers with teachers, but that's also important to communicate is, you know, we've got some limitations. So, great job, I love it. Thank you. Anyone else?
I was just going to ask, American Sign Language is treated just like the other world languages as far as college recognition, et cetera. I think sometimes that's not clear to people, so.
Sure. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion item on the Illinois Association of School Board's resolution and position statements. There's nobody from the administration to help us with this. We have to do this all on our own. Our resident expert, Mr. Ising.
All right. So you guys got in your packet the resolution report. If you haven't already looked at those, we also got a link to it, I think, on Friday. So basically, just kind of give you a quick overview. So there's eight, or I'm sorry, 12 new resolutions. One, two, three, four, five amended resolutions, and one reaffirming resolution. Of the 12 new resolutions, you probably recognized a familiar one. The first one, which is no longer called Student Safety and Protection, it is now just called Student Safety, but it is allowing teachers to conceal and carry guns within schools. So this is one that we had a lengthy discussion about last year. I can provide you with some information of how that changed from last year to this year. I will say about 90% is the same. Yep, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that, kind of an overview, and then a timeline. And I talked to Karen about this, and Justin, I was saying, confirm it with Mike, but he's not here. So if you guys want to, kind of like we did in the past, you know, read through these. As you're reading through them, always go to the very end and look at what the recommendation was of the resolution committee. So for instance, the new resolution number one, the recommendation was do adopt. And then you could go to your fourth page, which is this page. This is what I kind of always go off of, because it helps me go and read the resolutions and say, do I agree or oppose the same position that the resolution committee had, okay? So I guess if you haven't had a chance to dig into those deep, what I would like to do, if you can, is have all questions to me by this Friday, the 11th, and I'll email this all to you as well. But what I'd like to do is gather all of your questions. And as you know, we have a new person on the resolution committee for DuPage County. It used to be Terry from 203, and now we've got a guy out of Salt Creek, so.
James Blair.
Yeah, do you know him? Okay. So give me a week, you know, once you get me your questions on the 11th, I should be able to have answers back. So email me separately, and then I will email out everybody once I get answers to those questions by the 18th. And then our next school board meeting is the 21st, so we'll have discussion about these on the 21st, and it'll be just discussion on the 21st, and then we'll vote on all of them by November 4th, okay? And it still gives us one more school board meeting before the conference, so we still have the November 18th meeting. But in case we decide to speak, or you want me to represent our board at the delegate assembly and speak, I figured it'd be good to have that two weeks where I can gather information, and then, you know, kind of give you an outline of what I'll speak about. So I'll put all this in an email to you, and the outline and everything else, and just let me know. I don't know.
I did have a quick question.
Yeah.
Whether you remember, whether you remember or not, looking at this particular one, this first one.
Yes.
This one indicated, it says, which will allow voluntary district employees in any capacity, the ability to carry concealed firearms. Do you, do you recall whether that was the verbiage last year?
Show me where, or tell me where on the new one it is. Which paragraph?
It's on one, two, three, the fourth line, the fourth line under student safety. In the middle of the line, it begins with protection plans.
Yep, I'm looking.
Which allow voluntary district employees.
Okay, so the last one said, I'll read- Okay, so the last one said, I'll read verbatim what the one from last year said. Protection plans which may include administrators, faculty, and/or other staff who have successfully completed a training course approved by the school board, blah, 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 blah. So this new one says, which allows voluntary district employees in any capacity, the ability to carry. So, you know, where I see the difference in this is they're saying any employed district employee that's voluntarily doing it, where before they limited it to administrators, faculty, and/or other staff. So maybe semantics, you know, I mean, it still kind of reads the same.
And I didn't want to get into larger, I just, that just stuck out. I just had a quick question on that one, okay.
Yeah, but I, I can provide you with the one from last year to look and kind of outline what they changed and what they didn't change. I found it interesting. Yeah, well, I'll send this to you, and you guys can look at it.
It's the same, same submission, right?
It's the same district that submitted from last year. And, you know, again, small district, it's understanding, but, you know, there's a bigger push this year, which we knew. And, yeah, we've, yeah, we've, sure, you can talk to me offline about that, but yeah.
I think it's important to point out, we have 18 recommendations to give support or oppose. And of those, if you look at the resolution recommendation, the recommendation of the resolution committee, only two are, they recommend do not adopt. Including this first resolution, they recommended it, do adopt. So while we say it was coming from a small community, it made it pass the resolution committee where it significantly changed enough, or the composition of the resolution committee changed enough, that they recommend that they do adopt it.
That was true last year.
They recommended to adopt last year, too.
Okay, so we need to decide if this is something we want to be, spend political capital on at the annual meeting. And I know where Kathy is on that.
How can you tell?
I noticed one, the one that they said no on is compensation for the school board members.
I'm surprised that somebody even brought that, but anyway.
It's a glimmer of hope. All right, so I'll send everybody the timeline, and then, but just keep in mind, try to have me questions by this Friday, if you can.
I think it's a good timeline. We put this on the agenda earlier, as soon as we got it in internally, so that we can have some time to digest it and discuss it. And we have two more meetings where we could bring it forward. I think some of these are more routine and are easy to go through. I think maybe there's one or two where we'd want to spend some more time with, so, thanks, Mark.
Yep, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion item on the superintendent search. Mr. Razak posted a letter on our main website that kind of apprises the community of where we're at. We got some information from stakeholders on qualities we'd want in a superintendent. We put together a brochure flyer that went out to nationally. And right now, the search firm is in the process of collecting applications that we anticipate reviewing in next month and hopefully making some decisions in December. Any other comments on how that's going? The next item on the agenda is a discussion of item on legislative advocacy. I have no updates on this one at this time. Is anybody else? And the next item is Board of Education update. I got nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Amen.